City Council meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Dehart.
Yes.
Councilmember Hostage.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Mayor Proton Bernstein.
Here.
Mayor Garner.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you very much. At this time, do we have public comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. We'll start with the folks that are in the room. Can we have... We... You have two minutes to provide public comment. We ask that you approach the podium here and... Yeah, that's it. I don't have... I don't have my usual script. But it's only on items that are related to the closed session at this time. So if we can have Jerry Salazar followed by Gloria Gonzalez.
What are I just talking to it? Yes, my name is Jerry Salazar. I'm a survivor of Section 14. My family's been here in Palm Springs over 104 years. My grandmother, grandfather had seven boys. They were all raised on the reservation. And then we were born, you know, us kids, and we lived on the reservation. And we lived where the old post offices now. That was our house before they built that old post office. That was our house. And for no reason at all, I can still recall, I was small, I was little, but I can still recall the Indian woman we paid the rent to came over and told my father and my grandfather, "You gotta move. You don't have to pay rent anymore." And she left. And that's all. We didn't have no prior notice, no anything. I just can remember my dad and my grandfather, you know, they were... I could see that they were worried. I could see, you know, they had this big family. And, you know, I'm... There's not that many survivors left right now. To be a survivor, you have to be over 70 years old. And, you know, what does it take? My brother didn't make it. He passed away eight months ago. And he, you know, I wanted him to see the end of this. But he passed away first. And, you know, I remember him and I walking to Francis Stephen's school. My grandfather taking us to Francis Stephen's school every morning. You know, and there were... It was such a tight little village, such a tight little neighborhood. Everybody knew everybody. Everybody walked to the stores. Nobody had a car.
Thank you so much for your comments. The time has elapsed.
Really move on this for the survivors of Section 14.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Gloria Gonzalez. And just remind everyone, everyone has two minutes to speak. You'll hear that noise to notify you that your time has ended.
I'll try my best. This is my first time speaking, but thank you for giving me, allowing me the time. Speaking for my husband, he's a survivor. He was 14. When he... His... Him and his parents and his nine siblings had to move. He had a great time there with all the children playing in the yard. I was there. I visited there sometimes with my uncle, my aunt. They had relatives there. And I could see all the children, all races playing together and having fun. Unfortunately, that came to an end. My father-in-law had to quickly find a home for his nine remaining children. There was eight remaining children. There was 10 when he moved in there, but the other two, that's another story. So he had to find a home for his... All of his children. But my husband still recalls when they moved. The smoke and the fires from his home and his friends' homes. But he had a great childhood there, riding his bike all over with his friends and delivering the desert sun. And I can't go on because I'm getting very emotional. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We will now turn to callers on Zoom. We'll start with Matthew Lay. Matthew? We'll now move on to Carrie McWilliams.
We also don't have Carrie.
Do we have Makaiza Kisi?
We do not have that.
Gloria Holland?
No Gloria Holland.
Jerry or Gary Holland?
We do not have them.
Alvin Taylor?
We do not have them.
Delia Ruiz?
We also do not have them.
Pearl Devers? Pastor... Yeah, well, I'm sure we do, but let's just go down the list. Pastor Carl McPeters? Thank you. Pastor McPeters, it's your opportunity to speak. You have two minutes. If we can turn off the music that's playing? I think someone's phone might be on. Okay. Do... IT, do we have Pastor Carl McPeters? Because we're not hearing anybody out here.
Yes, we do, Rick.
Okay. For the public, I think one of you has music on. If you can turn that off, please. From where?
I'm Pastor McPeters.
Okay, thank you so much. You have two minutes, sir.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to address the mayor and council. I'm calling regarding the topic Claim Number 220903. I am a survivor and descendant of Section 14. My mom is still currently alive, and she brought us here from Texas. I have good memories of growing up on Section 14. We had... We were poor, but we didn't know it. My parents taught us to love and not hate. And so I'm here addressing the issue concerning Section 14. And I'm glad, even though it has taken the city decades to find the courage to address this unjust and illegal destruction of our community. I urge the city to make good on its promise two years ago to make us whole by working with our attorneys and making good the faith offer to resolve our claim. We have waited long enough. The time to do the right thing is now. So I conclude, Deputy Chief Deputy Attorney General received a letter... Charles O'Brien received a letter from Lauren Miller regarding Section 14. And he stated that the manner in which the demolition of Section 14 was accomplished made it a classic study in civic disregard for the rights and feelings of the minorities and citizens in the...
Thank you very much. Your time has elapsed. The next speaker is Aza Strange. Roxanne Briggs-Johnson. Omar Valdez. Okay, Omar, you have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Omar Valdez. I'm a survivor of Section 14 atrocity and diaspora. Speaking to Claim Number 22-0903. I'll keep it simple and quick. I think it's time for the city of Palm Springs to live up to its promise. And it's time for the ancient citizens of Section 14 to get their compensation for what happened to them. Thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Ronald Pelham. Do we have Ronald Pelham? Ronald, you have two minutes.
Okay, yeah, I will take the entirety of the two minutes. I am a descendant of a survivor Pelham family. And I could just... My dad was a small boy. He was actually a baby when all this happened. And my grandmother at the time was by herself. My grandfather was away at work. And I remember them telling the story of how abrupt all this came to be. And they're forced to... Forced out of their homes and, you know, not knowing what the next move was until, you know, they had to figure it out on their own with no assistance. But my family just staying tight-knit and staying together and residing in Banning. But all I can say is, I mean, just as anyone else, you know, if you were forced in this position, this was happening to you in current day, and you were forced out of a living space only to find that, you know, they forced you out to remodel it and turning it into a, you know, multi-billion dollar business over the course of the years, you know, how would you feel, you know, when you're on the other side of it? You know, being accosted, not just accosted immediately, but then for your future generations, you know, to be cut out of that opportunity. So, in short, it's unfortunate that, you know, all this has came to be. But just as well these other survivors, I think that it is time for the city, you know, to make amends and make it right, as promised, for how many families have been accosted from this unfortunate situation. And that's all I'm gonna say about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Johan Trams. LaShonda Smith. Lawrence Williams. Okay, Lawrence, you have two minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have two minutes.
I'm sorry. Okay. I'm a survivor of Section 14. I'm calling regarding the topic Claim for Number 220903. I just want to say, I think back on all the good memories of growing up on Section 14, some of the best days of my life, full of love and peace and trust. It has taken decades for us to come together and give words to the pain and suffering we went through because of the city's unjustified and illegal destruction of our community. I pray the city would take on this promise of two years ago to work with our attorneys and make a good faith offer to resolve our claim. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Martinez.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have two minutes.
Okay, so my name is Christina Gennara Martinez, and I am a descendant of Section 14. My parents and my brothers are survivors of Section 14. My mom lived there growing up and continued living there when she got married and started her family. So Section 14 was a diverse community with family unity. Everyone who lived there had respect, morals, and values. They worked very hard to not only raise their family, but also contribute to the growth of Palm Springs. They were forced out of their home with no assistance whatsoever, no help gathering their belongings, and no assistance for where they were going to go. This horrific action involved burning and bulldozing of their homes. All this creates debris, toxins, and smoke, causing absorption and inhalation problems. All these physical and emotional trauma that these actions caused, and no one cared to ever help. These poor people looking and grabbing what little they could before their home was next. No, they did not commit a crime. They were living their lives and building a future. Let's educate those that are leaning towards racism and following false statements and false stories. Palm Springs City, now is the time to do the right thing. Do what you said and work hard with our attorneys to bring us justice for all the wrong and inhumane actions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Larry Holland. Do we have Larry Holland? Mark Gregg. Mark, you have two minutes.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can. You have two minutes.
Great, okay. I'm Mark Gregg. I'm a business owner in the area. And I am very excited that you're taking these remarks and that you're looking at this situation. I love Palm Springs, and I want Palm Springs to lead the way in social justice, and I think that'll be a boon for the economy, especially since people are learning, you know, which cities are okay and which are not okay. What happened to people, especially I want to speak about the black people that lived in Section 14. At that time, that was the only place they could really live. Nobody would rent to them. It was very racist down there at that time. It's the only place they had to live. So when they were pushed out and not... They weren't given any place to live, and no one would rent to them in the city limits. They couldn't do their work. They couldn't... Their jobs. They lost their jobs. It was terrible. Alcoholism became rampant. Of course it did. And the opportunity for the generational wealth that you and I have had was denied to them. And the fact that you're talking about it now, I commend you highly, and I really appreciate you. And I hope that you guys do the right thing and lead the way and not drag your heels and be in the wrong column. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Shandra DeSilva. Do we have Shandra DeSilva? Dieter Crawford.
One second, cable. DeShonda is there. Shonda?
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, you have two minutes.
Okay, my name is Shandra DeSilva. I'm a Palm Springs Section 14 survivor. I was born on Section 14 in 1961. And my grandpa's home was on the southwest corner of El Segundo and Baristo and was burned down and bulldozed from the city of Palm Springs. And I grew up here in Palm Springs. I've been working here for 24 years as a full-time railter with Keller Williams now. And I remember at five years old seeing my grandpa crying the day they burned down his home. And he built that home. It took him two years to build that home, and the whole family was crying and sad, too. The city of Palm Springs has apologized. However, that is insufficient due to the lack of inheritance. Me and my family would have received owning property downtown Palm Springs right now where there are apartments built. I remember red notices given saying move out, and everyone was scrambling to find another place and to move to. It is a shame the city of Palm Springs has not made amends monetarily to the families for the harm that was done and the inheritance that was lost. And I do hope that the survivors will see a real change and receive some compensation before we are all gone. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Dieter Crawford.
Good afternoon, council and staff. My name is Dieter Crawford. I'm a resident of the Desert Highland Gateway Estates neighborhood. I'm a member of the Section 14 Survivors and Descendants Group. Just want to encourage you guys to take a good look at the proposal from the Section 14 legal team. I know the city apologized a couple of years ago for the harm that was done on the reservation. But now it's time for the city to make these families whole that were displaced. These families have been traumatized for many years and were never compensated for the damages and property that they lost at the time. So I think that now is... Time is overdue for us to make amends and provide some type of restitution or reparation for these families. Once again, my name is Dieter Crawford. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Lorraine Towers. Do we have Lorraine Towers? Stephanie Brown.
Hi, my, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. You have two minutes.
Okay. My name is Stephanie Brown. I'm a descendant of the section 14 survivors. And I'm calling regarding the topic GC and 54956.9, um, D2, our claim number 220903. Um, my family members have fond memories, memories growing up on section 14. I heard some of their stories and they, they were really, um, dear and touching to their heart, um, because it was a part of their community. It was their home. It was where they lived and where they survived. My grandmother, my great grandmother lived on the, uh, reservation. She had a boarding home. And, um, not only did she lose her home, but she also lost her business and her source of income when the city forced everyone to move. Um, we're asking that the city would make good on its promises. And of two years ago to make us whole by working with our attorneys and making a good faith offer to resolve our claims. We have waited long enough. The time to do right is now. It has taken us decades to find our voice and to give word to the trauma we experienced because of the city's unjustified and illegal destruction of our community. This is our home. This is our family home. And the generational wealth that our family members, our community, our neighbors have built and provided for Palm Springs. And that would have been passed to us have now been gone. Please do something about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mary Moore. Do we have Mary Moore? Please go ahead. You have two minutes.
Hi. My name is Mary Moore and I was born on section 14. And as I knew it was probably an end reservation. And, um, living there, we, it was very, it was very peaceful. And I, and the community was diverse and it was very, um, kind to each other. And as my memories being a, a small child there, it was very, very pleasant. And, uh, we, there's so much fun memories there. And I attended the Little Red Schoolhouse and also France Stevens Elementary School. My father Willie Moore lived on the section 14 reservation with my mother. My siblings and my grandmother and my aunts and other family, community members. There was a woman whose cousin passed and her yard started to look shabby. So my father and other men in the living, living on the reservation volunteered to assist the lady who was now a widow, were keeping her yard looking well maintained. The people of section 14 lived after one another because as neighbors and community members, they shared with one another. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sandra Washington. Do we have Sandra Washington? Sandra, you have two minutes. Hi, Sandra, you have two minutes to speak.
My name is Sandra Washington. I'm a survivor on section, of section 14. I'm calling regarding claim 220903. I have so many memories, fond memories of growing up on section 14. Hearing my parents' story of growing up on section 14. It has taken a decade of finding out our voice and to give the word to the trauma we experienced because of the city unjustified and illegal destruction of our community. I urge the city to make good on the promise of two years ago to make us whole by working with our attorney and making good faith offer to resolve our claim. We have waited long enough. The time to do the right thing is now. Please do the right thing now. You know, we lived here for many, many years and I don't think, you know, we should be, to keep, have to wait. Please make good. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jason Alvera. Do we have Jason Alvera?
Okay, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we have, you have two minutes to speak.
Hey, my name is Jason Alvera. I am a descendant of section 14. I am calling in regards to claim number 22-0903. Growing up as a descendant of section 14 has caused many bad memories. These memories were caused by the illegal acts by the city of Palm Springs. These illegal acts have not only denied me and my family of generational wealth, it has also caused generational health. These health problems have been drug and alcohol abuse, verbal, emotional and mental abuse that continues today. These mentioned health problems were not bias. They affected everyone of my family members, including me. Not only did the city of Palm Springs destroy my grandparents and mother's home, they caused my grandpa to take his own life when I was a young boy. For my grandpa's death, I blame the city of Palm Springs. I support the survivors and descendants of section 14 and ask that the city of Palm Springs make good on the promise that they made two years ago and make a good faith offer to our attorneys. It's time for the city of Palm Springs to make amends for their illegal acts against my family and all the section 14 families. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Donald Roy.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you have two minutes.
Okay. My name is Donald Roy and I'm speaking on behalf of 220903. I'm not gonna be long. Just wanna say that, uh, because of the past history of section 14, which I grew up, I'm a survivor in Palm Springs. And I was born right there in the hospital, in the desert hospital and my mom had 12 kids. And my daughter, my dad passed when I was a young boy. And because of the stress and the things that had happened in Palm Springs on section 14, I didn't get to grow up with the father. And some of the things now, even now, I think about things that a father could have taught me. When I got married, I needed his advice. He wasn't there. And my younger brother always stressed and always said he really needed a dad. But we didn't get a chance to experience a dad as so many people grew up with their dads. And we needed our dad. And just wanna say to, uh, councilman and the city of Palm Springs, for you to do what you have promised us that you would do. Cause the scars are still there and we still feel the hurt.
Thank you. Next speaker is Matthew Lay. Matthew Lay?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, you have two minutes.
Okay. Yeah, mine's will be short also. Uh, I'm a descendant of section 14. My parents moved there, uh, from Mississippi to, um, acquire a better life, uh, because of the racial injustice in Mississippi. And they brought their whole family, which is the total of, um, 17, uh, uncles and aunts, um, to California looking for a better life. And they moved to the section 14 area. And unfortunately, uh, they were, uh, participants in the injustice of the city of Palm Springs. And I just hope that they can, uh, make amends to, uh, what they have done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Gloria Holland. Gloria Holland?
Yes. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have two minutes.
Okay. Well, as you know, my name is Gloria Holland. This is regarding, uh, section 14. Of course, you know, everything I'm getting ready to tell you, we've been waiting for over 60 years to use our voice for the wrong that was done and to right a wrong. Uh, you know, I, I think about this all, all the time. You, as a city council, always find ways to fund you guys' projects with every group in Palm Springs. But when it comes to the people that was here in the beginning, that built this city from nothing for the rich and famous to enjoy, you drag your feet, you use trickery and you lie to them. Okay. You stall and make excuses. We are tired of the lies. We are tired of your tricks and we know more and we don't want any more excuses. Make your apology mean something besides empty hollow words. I am a survivor, as you know, and I live well despite the evil that was bestowed upon us and my people. And I don't need your programs. That's for the descendants. What we lost, no amount of money can cover it. So come up with an amount with our attorneys that at least we can walk away with dignity and never speak of this again. Cause I feel our voices are falling on deaf ears, sitting up there on your benches and with no feeling, you know, just cold to me. So make it feel like we are accomplishing something and not falling on deaf ears. Work with our.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Alvin Taylor.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have two minutes.
Okay. Yeah. Um, greetings, honorable mayor and, uh, staff. My name is Alvin Taylor. I'm a grateful member and a survivor of section 14, uh, survivors and descendants group. I'm calling regarding claim number 22-0903. I'm grateful to be a resident of Palm Springs, California. And I have some amazing memories of growing up in the middle of downtown in what we call section 14, affectionately known as the reservation. You know, I'll never forget as a child, growing up, being treated like cattle and sheep as we were herded off the property that we lived on. It seems to me that, uh, we were literally disregarded as humans. It's taken decades for me to find words that would express the trauma that I experienced as a result of the city's unjustified and literally illegal action, uh, which destroyed the community that I lived in as a young boy. Really, I, I don't wanna go through a lot of words. I know I don't have a lot of time, but I'm just here to urge and encourage the city of Palm Springs to please do the right thing. Make good on your promises of two years ago stating that you were willing to make us whole by working with our attorneys and making a good faith offer to resolve our claims. So far, you haven't done that. We've waited long enough. The can that you've been kicking down the road is at the end of the road. Please do something.
Next speaker is Delia Ruiz Taylor. Delia, you have two minutes. Delia, are you there? Delia, you have two minutes. You have two minutes. Hi, Delia. You have two. Yes, we can. You have two minutes.
My name is Delia Ruiz Taylor. I'm a section 14.
Delia, if you can, Delia, there's a, there's a problem with your mic. If you can turn off, if you're watching this, if you can turn off that video while you speak, that would be helpful.
She left the meeting.
Oh, okay. If she comes back on, we'll, we'll call her again. Larry Holland.
Hello?
Hi, Larry. You have two minutes. Yes, you have two minutes.
Uh, yes, my name is Larry Holland. Uh, I am a survivor, survivor of section 14. Uh, I've, I have very fond memories of growing up in section 14 in the city of Palm Springs, including elementary school, middle school and high school. I graduated from Palm Springs High in 1970, 71 and went on to receive a graduate, postgraduate degree from Occidental College in 1976. I have one critical question for any detractors and those positioned to decide the long overdue compensation issue. That question is this. What are you afraid of? Are you afraid to, to share the prosperity that, that the city of Palm Springs has obviously encouraged? The city didn't, didn't reach these heights, heights without the contributions of the section 14 survivors and, and those who have since passed. These contributions contain, I contend, have earned us a seat at the table. For years, in our efforts to receive fair consideration, we have experienced what I appear, what appears to be a much too familiar delay tactic. Delay, delay, delay. The survivors of section 14 have always been an asset to this city. And we deserve prompt sharing of the prosperity that has been generated throughout the years. It is simply time to right a wrong without further delay. Thank you for your ear.
Thank you. And we'll go back to Delia Ruiz Taylor. Delia? All right. Pearl Devers.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Pearl, you have two minutes.
Hi. Thank you so much to Mayor Garner, city council and staff. Uh, my name is Pearl Devers. I am the president of the section 14 survivors. Two years ago, uh, when mayor, then mayor Lisa Middleton, on September the 9th, 2021, was captured on the local channel three news saying, quote, "The harm cannot be denied. The city of Palm Springs drove bulldozers to take down people's homes. We cannot erase our role in what happened," end quote. That statement made by then mayor Middleton gave us hope, um, that the apology would be followed by action. Unfortunately, we're going on three years and the city has done absolutely nothing to prove the sincerity of those words and words of other city council members. The section 14 worldwide campaign about Palm Springs's ugly secret speaks nothing but the facts. the facts. However, the city has a great opportunity to join that campaign by admitting the wrong and adding a second page to that campaign showing its visitors and the world how they are stepping up to the plate to turn something ugly into a collaborative masterpiece. I know that visitors and people from near and far would appreciate the historical and present day collaboration. All we're asking for is justice for people who have suffered at the hands of an unjust system brought on by the city of Palm Springs. So once again, uh, as we have before, we urge you, I urge you to come to the table, sit down, and work with us to resolve this long overdue.
Thank you. Ben Mayfield.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Ben Mayfield. I'm a survivor of Section 14 and I piggyback on everything that has been stated this evening. I think one thing I want to bring to the forefront, mayor and city council persons, for me, uh, my parents, my grandparents, myself, we are descendants of slaves. And because we are descendants of slave, America has never, ever accepted us. There's a stigma we deal with every day going out on the street, dealing with police. We deal with it in employment. We deal with it going out to a local restaurant. We need the city of Palm Springs to put, put a human face on us. You know, for us, we're not blurred out there. We bleed, we have feelings, we like things to be taken care of. So you promised, please do right, make it happen. I know it's not going to be easy, but do the best you can and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Rochelle Ross. Do we have Rochelle Ross?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. You have two minutes.
Okay, hello, my name is Rochelle Ross. I am a Section 14 survivor. You saw the need to issue an apology and promise to work with Section 14 to help make the city wrong, right. You, you have done things, you haven't done things since. It's been two years. If you, if your apology was sincere, you should show it by your actions. My family was waiting over 60 years. Please do not make us wait any longer. All we want is to be treated fair. What if your family, what if this was your family? Please work with us, come up to a solution. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ayanti Roy.
Thank you so much. I'm going to um, speak on behalf of my father. Um, he's having a hard time. It's very difficult to see um, grown man cry. So I'm going to read this as he was getting choked up. Um, the effects caused by the abrupt um, removal of individuals, families, and people groups caused a disruption in the lives of all who were involved. The loss and devastation had and still has traumatic impacts on the lives of all of us. The survivors still wear the scars and we know that all scars do not heal. And even as time goes on, it serves as evidence that trauma has occurred. Such in a removal or dispose, disposal affects their traditions, peace, security, shelter, sustainability for families. The impact was cruel. It was beyond cruel and unusual punishment. It was unnecessary and they did nothing to deserve it. The descendants and the survivors are still reaping these effects today. While some used this to their gain, others were forced to find a way to sustain their family. As a result, it caused an abundance of physical, mental, spiritual, and emotional trauma, all direct effects. Not to mention homeownership, which was one of the most important ways to sustain a family. My father was robbed, his, his, his childhood with the father. My grandmother left with twelve.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Delia Ruiz Taylor.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Delia, that's, that's much better. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Delia Reese Taylor. I'm a Section 14 survivor. I'd like the city council and the public to know and understand that the conflict between Section 14 survivors and descendants and the city of Palm Springs is about the human experience of the Palm Springs legacy. Reflecting on the past, it was about the hurt and pain it caused our parents who were helpless and uneducated. They couldn't afford, no had, any, many options to relocate. The city did nothing to help us at the time, but they can help compensate the survivors now. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Sharon Hendricks. Oh, I'm sorry, IT, that we have Sharon in, in person, please. No, the, your mics, there you go, please.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Sharon Hendricks and I am a descendant of a, of survivors of Section 14. I am here on behalf of claim 220903. I come before you to ask you to do what you said you would do two years ago, to make a good faith effort to work this out with the attorneys, to put a better shine on Palm Springs. I was born here and I have always been proud of the Palm Springs stamped on my birth certificate. My grandfather came from Mississippi where the Jim Crow soft was and he brought his 14 kids and his mother-in-law. My mother-in-law had a, I mean, my grandmother, my great-grandmother had a boarding home here. She was a midwife. My grandmother worked for Frank Sinatra and many others, along with my grandfather who had a third grade education and ended up owning his own business. But what was stolen from us is that he had to start all over again when his house was burned down and his stuff was taken and no help from the city. My great-grandmother was Shata Indian and African-American. It is injustice. Palm Springs has always been progressive in everything we do. We need to be progressive and bringing, bringing what is wrong to the light and making it right. We're not asking just for money. We're not asking just to make a show. We're asking because it's deserved, because it's owed to us. When you have kids, what do you plan to leave your kids? Inheritance, money, a will, property? That was taken. That was taken. They had to start all over again. I urge you to do that. I, I believe in Palm Springs so much that when people come, I take them down streets and stores that are no longer here, but I also walk past the land that my grandparents lived on and my great-grandmother and many of my aunts and uncles, the people that are calling, the Campbells, the Erins, those are my family and they all had property here. Please do the right thing and work with our attorneys and make good on your promise. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I have no further speakers. So we will adjourn to our closed session and we will return for open session at 5:30 PM. Thank you, everyone.